That's the time that was noticed and posted for our work session with the jail district board. This is Tuesday, April the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. It's one o'clock P M. We're in the Board of Supervisors hearing room. Pursuant to A R S thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point oh-two H, the public will have access to the physical access to the meeting place fifteen minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion, and we begin with the roll call. District one?
Crosby is here.
District two supervisor English is present. District three?
Supervisor Judge is here.
We have a complete board. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app, or by phone by calling six oh-two, six oh-nine, seven-five-one-three, or eight-eight-eight, six-eight-zero, six-seven-one-four. Conference I D, seven-one-two, zero-eight-nine, nine-one-seven pound. If you have trouble accessing the meeting remotely, call five-two-zero, four-three-two, nine-two-zero-zero. Excuse me, for direction. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors. Public comments will not be taken. Introductions are the same for all of our work sessions. And for a complete record, it's good if you will give your name and your position before you speak so that the record is complete. Having said that, Mr. Carl Watch, did you want to do any introductory remarks?
I do, just for the public, just to make sure why we had to separate this meeting and continue to today is that the the Board of Supervisors has convened this as the jail district board. So even though it's the same players, you are now the jail district board representing to the jail district board. So I just wanted to clear that up for the public. That's why we had to agendize it a little differently. So we did it appropriately. That's my introduction comments and give it off to Sheriff. You'll start off?
Well, good afternoon, buddy, and George, jail district board and chair. First time I get to say that. So I I just want to start off all the form and thank the men and women at the jail and the staff within. They 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 do an amazing job. They're here today. It's their budget we're presenting today from the medical staff. Megan, thank you to you and the team over there, Commander Bradshaw and all his team down there. And they they do. This is probably the toughest component of the sheriff's office when it comes to some of the challenges. We think of patrol and the the more visible aspect of the sheriff department, but truly the three jails we run the county are huge liability for not just us, but everybody, you all, as the fiscal agents for the county and and the challenges don't seem to be getting any better. I think they need to become more complex. But I want to thank the citizens and the community for the support over the years with this jail. It's almost forty years old to include the recent district. That's why we have this today. And so I think we've become ten out of fifteen jails in Arizona that have a jail district. Is that correct on that? Yes, sir. So, but again, go through the challenges. And and this presentation, though very brief, actually mirrors the other half of the sheriff operation operation, which is a twenty-six hundred dollars that we asked for with our other staff. But there are challenges. I just feel through them very quickly is the increase in inmate population. A lot of that is directly accountable to the border and innovative effort programs enforcement programs that we've done on the border, which has actually had an impact on our population in the jail. Illicit drugs, fentanyl, no secret there. That's a liability itself and all the different things we do to prevent that from coming into jail. But the reality is sometimes they come in with already in their systems, and we're trying to deal with that on health level, mental health, pet levels, to include an object safety issue. Mental health, no secret to our jails, no secret to any jail in the country. And then the federal regulations never seem to go away. They just get a little more detailed. The
Just a good example of that, Kenny Bradshaw, commander, sheriff's office. The increased federal regulations, they just put opioid addicted people under the protection of the American with Disabilities Act. So we are forced to continue medication for them. Megan could talk more about that and will during her part of the presentation, but that's just one federal guideline that has increased our expenditures greatly. The other thing is there are two bills right now at the federal level to do away with single inmate housing. If that goes through, I I don't know how we will continue to operate traditionally. We'll have to come up with all new methods, all new designs. I'm glad we're already in the process of of trying to get a new facility because if what they call solitary confinement goes away, discipline, severity, mental ill people, they're going to be very difficult to properly house. Just to try and keep people protected, ex-law enforcement officers, anybody that has sex crimes, especially against children, that we are mandated to keep safe. We're going to have to come up with some other kind of ideas. So the, you know, federal regulations have a great deal to do with what with corrections and detention and and it's going to get expensive.
That's one of the reasons we don't have the two-eighty-seven G, which is a program of the federal government to house federal inmates. We have enough struggles to huddle our locals, let alone that. And I'm just not in the business to do that. The I support the program. It's just not fitting for us here. The marketplace competitiveness competitiveness to include the inflation rate, we talked about last week with our general budget. And now this one, we just lost a very good officer over the last two weeks on the Department of Corrections, mainly because of the pay and the benefits and incentives over there compared to a rural county. So we stay competitive through our placement of our employees, our team members, I call them. We'll continue to do that, but the challenges are real to us. And that's the biggest challenge within the sheriff's office is staffing within our three jails. So at this time, I'm turning over to Commander Bradshaw to go over a fiscal request.
Sheriff's already addressed our first request is, you know, to stay consistent with the rest of the sheriff's office. Twenty-six hundred dollars per employee for all detention personnel. But keeping in line with what the board has requested in the past, if somebody gets below standard evaluation, they're not eligible for this twenty-six hundred dollars. You know, we often don't like to tie performance with market value. We'd rather have it keep it separate, market value and performance, but we know your desire. And so if anybody that is below standard would not receive that twenty-six hundred dollars. And the total request for the salary increase is one hundred ninety-one thousand, one hundred fifty-nine, and that would come from current jail district funding. Our extradition budget has been underfunded for years. Currently, we are budgeted at forty thousand dollars. We received, we moved fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars from another line just to increase that budget within detention. And we're currently at expenditures of sixty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-four. The problem with extraditions is that we carry the financial responsibility, but the county attorney decides who we go and get. So if we have to go to Texas, if we have to go to New York, if we have to go to Leavenworth, if we have to go to California, we don't have any say in that. But we have to pay for it. So they don't have access to our funding line. They can't see where that is. We try and communicate as well as we can about, do we really need to go get this person? Is this worth it for us to use all this money to go get them? But we don't have any decision on, the final decision is up to the county attorney whether we go or not. So we're asking for an additional twenty thousand dollars in that in that line. And historically, the overtime budget for jail service costs two thousand or two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, four hundred per year. Our current overtime budget is seventy-eight thousand, and we've been funded at seventy-eight thousand dollars for overtime for the last ten years. That has never increased. The request is to increase the jail district overtime budget by a hundred and fifty thousand to meet that demand. And that's everything that we are.
Your question about the two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand overtime budget. Are you having that hard of a time hiring people? Because a lot of times you're overtime.
Right.
I mean, it's not like you're out doing research on a crime that was committed. These people are there. And so I'm wondering if you should not be looking at more staff instead of more overtime?
We're doing both. We wanted this year, our request to be our main request to be overtime and the twenty-six hundred dollar increase for our current staff that are loyal and stay with us. But we also think that that's going to help with recruitment. Like the sheriff said, and you know, we've lost probably three officers in the last six months to the Department of Corrections because of salary. So yes, we currently are carrying seven vacancies. We do get a lot of applicants, but we don't get a lot that are successful in the process.
So you haven't filled the seven vacancies, and that's why you're still having to do overtime?
That's partly because, yeah. And we, this year, we were hit really hard with a lot of hospitality. So Copper Queen has not been very helpful. We go and we've talked with the C E O a couple of times. Pretty much everything we send to the hospital ends up going to Tucson, which is very expensive for staffing because we send people for twelve-hour shifts, and we have to pay for a hotel room and food, and that takes away from the staffing at the jail. So that's backfill that we have to use overtime for to to man those facilities.
Any questions from board members at this point?
I would add that I'm generally not in favor of overtime as opposed to more personnel because officers are obviously in jail, and that isn't a really particularly healthy environment. Even though that's the career that they've chosen, I would rather that they got their two days off as opposed to, you know, being more in favor of more personnel.
Supervisor Crosby, we have a plan to come after the budget, and we start to get real good projections on what the jail district will look like with our income. We have a plan to come back to the board with an increased, a request for increased staff to start prepare for maybe a different facility in Sierra Vista, taking over the old juvenile, and to start to prepare for the new facility.
Thank you for that, Commander.
Yes, sir.
You know, back then?
Yes.
By eight weeks?
Because they're not ready to present that.
If I could add, you know, and I'm already last last week's meeting, when we talked about our recruitment, you know, our competitors being a state, it's no different with Department of Corrections too. They got a lot of incentive programs right now. I just lost a deputy four days ago. He had six, seven years with us, went to DPS. They started him at eighty-five thousand dollars with seven years of experience. I I just can't touch it. I got to go in place to that, topping out. Again, it's just in the state D O C the same way. And so we're losing talent. I mean, I don't know what else. I was going to send you all an article. This article came out where DPS is three hundred troopers short. For example, the prison is over a thousand short. So their incentive programs are like really, really nice right now. Trying to increase that. And their salaries are so far above ours. But I think like what?
Ten thousand dollar hiring bonus?
Hiring bonuses, the pay is much, much higher. And they're using their competitors, not Cochise County or not, you know, Graham County or places like that. They're using Phoenix P D, Mesa P D, Scottsdale, the bigger cities. And that's true to them. That's their competitors. But it really ripple back that it's all of us here in these rural communities, which we've expressed before to our governors.
They're also providing travel. So if if somebody locally is hired for the Department of Corrections and the position they need is in Tucson, they'll have buses that they run from Douglas Prison to Tucson to take them there. And that's on-duty time is riding the bus. So that's a huge increase. But I don't know. We bust deputies.
Well, they get in their vehicle. On time.
Yeah, they start right when they get, they train mission on, they're on.
Yeah.
The, hopefully, they're in our county though.
Taking their horse action from the time they get in the car.
It it's, that's the theory.
Yes.
And and we want to be reasonable on these. Again, we're not asking a lot on either side of the house. And it's one big house, but either side of the house, but it's it's what we think is reasonable for a rural county that fits within our budget, our efforts, and which you all have agreed to be competitive with us. So we thank you all for that.
As a part of the jail district, jail medical, even though they report to the health department, has been moved into the jail district. So Megan figured would present on the detention health services part of the district.
The largest medical help facility in the county.
Right. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Bacon.
Thank you. So I'm going to start with the challenges that detention health services are facing, and our challenges are pretty much in line with the challenges that the sheriff's office and detention facility are facing as well with the increased jail population and the increased patient load with and also the content of the patient load. We are seeing a lot more individuals with a lot more complicated health conditions than we were seeing, you know, three or four years ago. We are also spending approximately twenty thousand, twenty thousand dollars per quarter on individuals that are booked on border crimes. That directly reflects that border crisis that we're having. And we face challenges with retention and recruitment as well. And we, of course, are facing the challenge of the lack of space and the need for a modern facility. The opioid crisis, like Commander Bradshaw was talking about, has spurred a lot of, a lot more federal mandates, one being the ADA regulations and the ADA now fully recognizing opioid use disorder as a disability. So like Commander Bradshaw said, that made, that means that we must continue medications for opioid use disorder whenever an individual comes into the facility and is already it is already under treatment for opioid use. They're very expensive. They're very expensive and the the time and effort that it takes to run a good medication for opioid use disorder program is pretty extensive. We have also had a very large increase in the workload due to the severity of the withdrawal symptoms that individuals are coming in experiencing that are not currently or that are on medications for opioid use disorder, but especially those who are not on any of those medications, and they're coming in and they're facing very severe withdrawals from fentanyl. And we have been able to start up our program and have been very successful with it, but there's it's been a challenge, of course. We, as far as accomplishments go for detention health services, we've had a pretty, we've been able to remain pretty consistent with the average percent of inmates that are on medications throughout the last three years. And the percent of inmates that are on psychiatric or mental health medications has showing a very slow increase. And that's due to the increase in services that we're providing. We've been able to increase the access to mental health care and the access to seeing the psychiatrist and making sure that those those things are happening. So that reflects the cost of the the increase in cost of medications and time. Our sick call visits that are initiated or that are done conducted by one of our nurses have been pretty consistent with increasing by about a hundred per year. Our lab draw, lab draws have doubled since two thousand and twenty-one. And our provider sick call, our provider seeing almost double each year from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three, the amount of patients. And we are, we were able to get a bus stop put into, put in at the Cochise County jail. It's a really big, exciting thing for us. And it's been a very long process. It's been going on. We've been trying to do this for quite some time. But it's really exciting because just today, they're down there putting in the bus stop structure. And so we've been able to work with the city of Bisbee to secure bus passes and all the individuals, or not all of the individuals, but individuals being released from custody who need a need transportation into Bisbee to get to services, to get to a ride, to get to a phone, will be given a bus pass upon their release, and they are able to go from the jail to the other locations throughout Bisbee. And we also have been working with Cochise Connection to where they can hope, will eventually be able to provide them with a bus pass, not only to say Safeway in Bisbee, but to Sierra Vista or to Douglas. And that's been a really fun project, and we're excited that that's taken off. We have also been collaborating with public health and community health workers through our community reentry program, and they're providing transportation from our facility for released individuals to treatment. And so if somebody has been accepted into a rehab, they've been working with them and getting them directly from jail to the rehab facility, possibly stopping in for a probation visit on the way if they need to, or stopping to pick up medications on the way if they need to. And of course, our medication for opioid use disorder program. And the additional funding that we have received this year, just this last month, Commander Bradshaw and I were here to request your approval for the grant funding that we received from the state of Arizona, the Attorney General's Office. The funding was in the amount of one million, forty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents. And this funding is going to be used to augment and support the current community reentry program that we have, and also that medication for opioid use disorder program. And for contraband detection and reduction, this is going to be a very very big help for us, especially with those very expensive medications that we're needing to procure in order to make better take care of our population. And it will also provide us with four additional full-time employees. And for our funding requests for the year twenty-four, twenty-five, I am requesting a compensation adjustments to increase all of my staff from their salaries to ensure that each member is at or above ninety-three percent of market. And then we're requesting an increase to our professional services budget. This budget was previously grant funded and was available to end, but that grant funding is no longer available, so requesting thirty-two thousand dollars increase there. We're requesting a forty-two hundred dollar increase to our training and travel budget to increase the opportunity for continued education out of the state. And we are requesting a staffing increase for a clinical lead position. It's desperately needed in order to support all the added programs that we have and the workload that we have, the added patient. And we are requesting an additional sixty thousand dollars to support and care of persons. This is what we utilize for patient appointments that are off-site, those hospital appointments, radiology, the laboratory stuff that has to be conducted off-site. As you saw, our labs have doubled. So we're definitely needing a little bit more funding there. And then the ninety-six hundred dollar increase to our off of the operating portion, just for the purposes of inflation. The total increase that we're requesting is two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-one.
And members of the board, yeah, I'm chair, can I add that all the increases that are being requested through security and through help are within the established budget that the board established for the jail district. So they're within those different budget lines for the revenue from the district.
Could I ask a specific question? The under detention health services, you asked for four additional full-time equivalents. Are those nurses?
No, the four additional full-time were those four additional positions. There's two community reentry specialist positions and two nurse positions. And those are going to be paid for out of the grant funding that we was received through the opioid debate funding.
Well, are you having a hard time getting nurses?
I have had a, we have struggled with applicants over the last couple of years. We went probably about eight or nine months without receiving a single applicant for the position.
That's why I'm asking the question, you know.
Yeah. However, recently, we have seen an uptick in those applicants. And I I think I have about four or five applicants right now that we're hoping to be able to reach out to as soon as these positions are posted for the grant funding.
Well, it's not like working in a hospital and or a doctor's office.
Nope.
So I I can understand that. Well, when you ask for a staffing increase of a hundred and two thousand, that doesn't cover four full-time positions. That's why.
No, that's just.
Hurrying into that.
Those are covered under the grant.
The staffing increase that I'm requesting is for one, one nurse position, a clinical care position.
All right. Peggy, you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. It, having it under its own set of funding is kind of confusing to me. And I know next year it will be, it'll kind of look normal because we'll have something to compare it to, but it won't be here next year. So I I guess you nodded, it's confusing to you too, having your own separate funding line. So I don't, I can't say, yep, we're familiar with your budget and sure, presented those numbers are great.
This was new to all of us.
Yeah.
And we even had to postpone the regional meeting because we didn't announce it correctly. So we're all just working our way through it. So I I think that what we're doing, and I've asked a lot of questions to other counties, and and that seems to be the way this is done. So
It it seems good, though.
Right.
I would say that it feels, it feels good. And there is that extra money.
Right.
Like, like Chairman English says, if, you know, if you need more money, you need to get a tax for it. Hey, saying that out loud in the meeting. And we did, in fact.
Our money trees have all died, you know.
Have to get it, we're, you know, talking to our, my fellow sheriffs, you know, district. This has been a blessing to our jails for the mental health, the medical side of it, staffing, security, you name it, whatever aspect your challenge is, this has been a blessing. Ten out of fifteen sheriffs are working this. It's nice to have this. Thank you.
Well, I I think we always need to, if there are any citizens listening in, we always need to reiterate that Cochise County has not stepped back from our commitment. The budget that we had for the jail sheriff goes into this pot. So it's not like that, you know, we just, we created this district so that we could get all this money out of it, and then we could have this money to play with other places. That's not true at all. And I want to keep reiterating that because that's many times the public's perception.
And at the beginning of the month, there were some questions about that as far as, you know, everything that the jail lies now, it's labeled as jail district. So there were some questions as to, well, how come you're spending jail district money on repairs to the current facility when it was all supposed, all the tax money was supposed to go to a new facility? Well, that's not necessarily true. That maintenance of effort that is set by the state that the county still puts into the district, it's still labeled jail district because it's all jail district.
Because it's in their budget.
Correct, right.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think we don't always communicate enough to the public because as a former teacher, I'll tell you, you have to say it seven times before they hear it. And sometimes we think we say it once, what we told them. Well, that wasn't enough. So I think we need to keep telling them how jail district works and what the commitment from the county is. Tom, you've been silent. Do you have questions?
Yes, I do. I would like to know. Well, I noticed that heroin seizures are down as a result of probably the cheapness of fentanyl. So I was wondering, what is the severity of opioid opioid withdrawals between fentanyl and other opioids like heroin or OxyContin, if anybody would care to share that?
Well, historically, in my experience as a healthcare provider, the withdrawals that we're seeing now from fentanyl have been the worst withdrawals that I've ever seen in my history. And I've been at the jail for almost eighteen years now and gone through a variety of different types of withdrawals with individuals. And by far, the fentanyl withdrawals are the worst that I have seen, and they last quite a bit longer. And so it has, it's definitely been an effort to help with those.
Okay. Thank you very much for that information. I kind of figured that.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you, Sheriff Daniels and Commander Bradshaw and staff for that presentation.
Any other questions or comments?
I didn't have any. Thank you.
Well, I'm looking forward to this project of the new jail becoming a realization. And I'm really encouraged by the programs that we've been able to get grant funding for to help to solve some of the problems that we know this vulnerable population. And whether or not you like them, they're a vulnerable population, and therefore we have to treat them as such. And they don't always know what the next step is. And and they take the wrong step and they end back with us. And so I think whatever we're doing, that we can keep that recidivism down and help those people to be productive because most of the people that are in jail are going to get out. So we need to do what we can in order to help them be productive in in their families and in society so that they don't come back again. So they'll have a comfort zone. And I think everything that we're doing right now is leading toward that. So I really appreciate that, that we're well, and we thought about doing it earlier, but funding makes a difference. And so it wasn't just the jail jail district, it was the funding from the Legacy Foundation. Many things like that have helped us. So I don't, I don't. funding from the Legacy Foundation. Um, many things like that have helped us. So I don't, I don't also want to let the public think that we passed the jail district and that solved everything. We were on our way to solutions with other means. This will just help.
Twenty million dollars from the state for the facility.
Right. So we're showing progress and and as with any grant situation, if you are successful, then you will sort to attract more grants. Because they'll want to be a part of something that is successful. All right. Uh, Mr. Carwitz, do you have anything to say? Juan, were you taking notes?
He was taking notes. He's gonna weigh in about the the withdrawal symptoms. Uh, but no, I was just gonna re- reiterate uh that we do contribute as and Chair, you mentioned, as our maintenance of effort. So that, repeat, repeat, repeat. This is not all coming from tax revenue. This is what we shifted over to the jail.
It may all be coming from tax revenue, but not specific jail tax revenue.
Correct.
Okay.
It's all tax.
It's all tax revenue when it comes to us, wherever it comes from. Okay. Sheriff, Mr. Bradshaw?
Thank you, everybody. We appreciate you all.
Are you all on overtime?
That's a question I always get. You know, passion time.
Okay, uh, before I uh, believe we need to say our next meeting is Tuesday, May the seventh, in the Board of Supervisors hearing room. It's a regular Board of Supervisors meeting. Having said that, our session adjourned.